I would like to call the meeting to order. Ms. King, may I have a roll call, please?
Yolanda Montoya Cordova. Peggy Mueller Aragon.
Here.
Danielle Gonzalez.
Here.
Barbara Peterson.
Here.
Josefina Dominguez.
Here.
Courtney Jackson.
Here.
Crystal Tapia Romero.
Here. So our first item for consideration and action is adoption of the February twenty-second Finance Committee meeting agenda and approval of the January twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-three Finance Committee meeting Finance Committee meeting minutes. However, on our agenda, we will be removing items four A and four R off of consent. So may I have a motion, please?
I move to approve the February twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-three Finance Finance Committee meeting agenda as amended and approve the January twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-three Finance Committee meeting minutes.
I'll second.
Thank you. Ms. King, may I have a roll call, please?
Peggy Mueller Aragon.
Yes.
Danielle Gonzalez.
Yes.
Barbara Peterson.
Yes.
Josefina Dominguez.
Yes.
Courtney Jackson.
Yes.
Crystal Tapia Romero.
Yes. So our first item for consideration is item A, which is consideration for approval of budget adjustments to existing grant budget for the following funds. This is a discussion-action item. We have items one through five listed. I have Ms. Marin here, who will be discussing it. She's our senior director from Grant Management. And I will actually open this up to the board for any comments or questions on this particular item.
Okay, so I just, I had some follow-up, some follow-up questions about the Family Index Pilot Grant. So it was like a three-point-six-million-dollar total, I think, was, was what the grant was. And so my question was there, I got, we got a list of what the almost four million dollars was spent on. And there was like over like sixty different, you know, spends. And I know, Ms. Marin, this is probably gonna be hard. It's probably gonna be a program person that has to probably answer this question. But with so much, I know it's, it's, you know, a brand-new pilot, so we don't have any data yet. And it's, I think, a two-year pilot. So I know there's not data, and I understand that. But with so much going on, you know, MathRig or Playworks, MLS Layers, World, Avid, ARC, PBL, World, GLAB, Ape, I mean, there's just, I read them all. There's a lot of them. How will you, how will they know what's working if you're using all of those as far as improving student outcomes?
Thank you for your question. Madam Chair, members of the board, Superintendent Elder. And the, indeed, the Family Index Pilot is a two-year pilot that will probably be assessed at the end of the two years. As we are already aware that during the current legislative session, there is discussion of additional funding in the continuation of the pilot. And I do have Executive Director Penelope Burchard, I believe, logged into the meeting. And she might be able to provide a little bit more details on this particular initiative.
Thank you, Mahila, Board Member Otaguan, members of the board, Superintendent Elder. So the other, just to note, in the list that you were provided when you asked that question, these are pulled out of each individual school's budget call. So what the schools have been asked to do is to align their program to their ninety-day plan for looking at those outcomes. So every school is not doing all of these things that you listed as I compiled it when I submitted that. But I think the, each individual school will be able to look at the specifics of what they did at their school and how that impacted students at their individual schools, if that answers your question.
Okay, and so you, you believe that they have the ability to really delve into the dat, that data to know that these program, let's say, one school has five of these programs or resources or, you know, personnel, that they'll be able to figure out, oh, this one isn't working, this one is working. You believe they'll be able to do that at the end of the pilot when they do. When are they, are they gonna not assess until the end of the two years?
So, Board Member Otaguan, the individual schools will be asked to compile the data. They did last year in which Associate Superintendent Jean Saavedra collected that information. We will pull it, be in program as soon as that's asked to report that out to the PED, as soon as we have that document from the PED. But I do know and understand from the associates that they are already asking individual schools to collect that data. So for example, if they've funded an interventionist, what is the data for the students specifically that are seeing that interventionist?
Okay, okay. Well, that's good. And then another thing, I know one of the things that was listed is that you are also hiring extra people who are gonna be pushed into the classrooms to help, you know, with our students' learning needs. Has that already occurred?
Yes, so all the positions are already in, out in the schools and pulling that today. It looks like direct instruction. There's seven in that area. Indirect, more counselor, librarian, social work type of positions, there's about seven. And then very minimal, about three in the, the higher two-thousand category, more indirect support. So those, those positions are already in the schools, helping to support students at a variety of different levels.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Have any other questions on that particular item?
I'll move for approval. I'll second. This is Danielle.
Thank you. Ms. King, if I could roll call, please?
Peggy Mueller Aragon.
Yes.
Danielle Gonzalez.
Yes.
Barbara Peterson.
Yes.
Josefina Dominguez.
Yes.
Courtney Jackson.
Yes.
Crystal Tapia Romero.
Yes. So our next item for consideration is for approval of district purchase or expenditure that equal, equals or exceeds two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. And this is for strategic resource planning. This is a discussion-action item. And I will open it up once again to the board for any questions on this particular item.
Okay, then I'll go.
There you go.
I was just thinking. So I know, I read the article, we were provided with an article about blended learning. And I read it all. And understand, I mean, I'm just assuming that APS wasn't part of any of these, of any of these studies. I'm just making that, I'm just making that assumption that they're, that they are, were not part of it. And I know it included studies from Europe and from Asia and Africa. So I know that a lot of the studies that they, that went into this meta-analysis were from other countries. And so I was just assuming that APS wasn't one of them, correct? So you brought this out to us for, for a reason. So my question would be, if you are referencing that analysis, what does that have to do with, you know, with APS? And how can we say that blended learning is really doing a lot as it concerns improved student outcomes?
Thank you for your question. Madam Chair, Board Members, I think there might be a little confusion about which item we are on.
So we should, are we on, are you referring to item R? On strategic resource planning?
Page one fifty-seven.
So I think the, the agenda might have been reworded.
It was a redone.
So that item, what was item R, which is your, the questions that you have, are we?
These are different.
Item Q.
Okay, let's check.
So this is for districts, so Q is district specialty lab equipment and student teacher devices?
So that's what you're saying? Because on mine, does yours say, does R say?
Strategic resource planning. The revised agenda.
Okay, so I, I have, I don't have that one. So I think.
So yours is related to specialty lab equip, yes, item Q.
So then that's what happened. I just went by my digital.
Well, we were.
Digital stuff. Were you confused?
Well, we were thinking there were.
I was, I'm confused then.
For both. I think, anyway, so we'll be answering this one.
So real quick, Ms. King, how do we do that? Because we approved the other items. We approved Q on the consent agenda.
We have to.
I think you'll have to vote on item Q, because you pulled that from consent.
We pulled R.
R.
Pulled R. I think you have to vote on R.
So vote on R, and then are we able to go back to Q since we've already voted on it? On consent?
I don't think we voted on consent.
No. We approved it, right? Sorry.
I don't.
But we did not pull it off.
Didn't pull it off. We already approved that.
Well, you just moved to remove Q from the consent, from the consent.
So I guess you could.
Consent agenda.
Go ahead and amend.
Okay, so let's vote on R. So if I could get someone to make a motion on item R, consideration for approval of district purchase, and then we will make an amendment for item Q.
I'll make a motion that we approve consideration for approval of district purchase or expenditure that equals or exceeds two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars for strategic resource planning.
Second.
Okay, Ms. King, may I have a roll call, please?
Peggy Mueller Aragon.
Yes.
Danielle Gonzalez.
Yes.
Barbara Peterson.
Yes.
Josefina Dominguez.
Yes.
Courtney Jackson.
Yes.
Crystal Tapia Romero.
Yes.
Okay, so I, I move to remove item Q, approval of district purchases or expenditure that equals or exceeds two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, district specialty lab equipment and student teacher devices from the consent agenda.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Ms. King, if I have a roll call, please?
Peggy Mueller Aragon.
Yes.
Danielle Gonzalez.
No.
Barbara Peterson.
Yes.
Josefina Dominguez.
Yes.
Courtney Jackson.
Yes.
Crystal Tapia Romero.
Yes. Okay, so now.
Now you're prepared.
A discussion for consideration for approval of district purchase or expenditure that equals or exceeds two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. This is for district specialty lab equipment and student teacher devices. This is discussion-action, and I will pass it back over to Board Member Miller Otaguan for her questions.
Well, I already kind of asked it, so, or asked one of them.
Do we need a recap, or we're, I know we were scrambling on that item.
So this order or request is to purchase Chromebooks and iPads for students, devices for our teachers and our EAs, and then also to fund and our elementary school specialty labs. So those are the purchases. With the metadata that is shown, it is a new, you know, this is a new era in education, and there are not a lot of studies. So that was about one of the, one of the questions was, is where's the data? This is one of the areas where I found data on blended learning, on having devices. One of our goals in educational technology is not only to have students have a device, but also to be able to use that device in a respectful learning digital, digital citizenship. Learning fact from fiction, everybody has a device with them. Everybody can Google anything nowadays. But how does a kid tell if that is a true fact or a false fact? So using that inside of a classroom, inside teachers teaching kids how to use a device or the internet respectfully and intentionally, so they can learn. That is one of the reasons why we feel that we need to refresh and replace any devices that have been damaged or aged out. And this is something that will be a purchase that will be needed every year if we continue with our one-to-one.
Right, and, and I have no complaints whatsoever, because we have to use technology, you know that already, that's how I feel. But I, I, I read the study, and so, of course, it, it did kind of concern me a little bit. And just, I know that one of the things that was said, that you just have to click so students know how to, how to click and where to click, so a child can find the answer to almost any question. So are we really then teaching them how to think critically, just because they can find the knowledge? Can they do that on their own, you know?
Or yes, you know, they can click, but in, as a child, if you don't have a teacher to teach you, is this, you know, how do you verify your facts? It could be the same as if a kid was reading the National Enquirer compared to the Post. You know, what, where is that in between? Where is the, where is that critical thinking of, I know that this is not true? Or yes, I do realize that these are verified facts. So that's one of the things about integrating technology into the classrooms, that we can teach those skills. We can teach kids to use a technology in a meaningful way, not just, not just click here and here and then get the answer.
Okay.
If I may just add to that, so I, I will say, it is not the case that our teachers are just pointing kids to the internet and telling them to click here for the answer. This purchase is for those, the specialty labs in the, and maker spaces in the elementary grades.
Which is a good thing.
So, so that the kids can get hands-on experience, and it's all guided by teachers. Shell Marie was actually, was saying, and I wish, we have this little video where we've gone out into the schools and, and the EdTech Department has taught teachers how to help teach their kids how to use this type of equipment. And she was just saying, oh, I wish I could show it to them, but it wasn't part, we didn't, you know, trying to be respectful of the, the time of all of this. We didn't have a presentation on it.
That's okay.
Love to be able to make that presentation, showing you how our teachers actually use these.
Right, and so, I mean, I just want to kind of point to the study, because when, you know, I read through it, and it said the performance of children had varied across, across subjects. So of course, in kindergarten, as a kindergarten teacher, I'd be like, hmm, not good, not good for them. When it came to, to reading, there was just a weak positive effect when it came to reading, and we probably saw that during the pandemic, right? That, that was just not the way to teach reading. If it, I think the hot, the effect was largest with the blended learning when it was used in computer classes, which made sense. And then it went down, that one was a one-point-zero-G equals one-point-zero-nine. And then the language and language courses, you know, went down, and then in math it did, and physics. And then there was no really effects, significant effect in biology and science classrooms. So I thought that was an interesting thing that they said, because I would think it kind of might. It would think, I would think so, but it, it didn't. So I just wanted to just kind of, just coming from being an elementary teacher, that if this is the way we're going to go, there has to be, according to even this study, a lot more research about the right way to do it, because we are definitely not, not there yet at all. So I know that they said we encourage researchers to conduct more high-quality, large-scale research with a focus on different factors when it comes to creating a blended learning design. So I just, I don't know who is there yet. I don't know if APS is, is there yet or not. But I just want to point out that, that I think there's a lot more work to do. And we need to look at, you know, grade levels and subjects when we come to, if that, if we ever go that direction. It's not a direction that I would really want to go with the, our youngest, you know, our youngest children for sure, so.
Thank you. Do we have any other further discussion or questions?
Just one clarification. Is this primarily maintaining and replacing equipment that we already have, rather than opening up new things? New programs?
It's a blend. The majority of it is replacing devices that are already in place. The only ones that are new are for the maker spaces and STEM and STEAM labs for elementary schools.
Just in solidarity with my early childhood colleague, I'll just put a plug in minimal use with, with the youngest children and most critical use with older. And I'll move for approval.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
A second.
Thank you. Ms. King, if I have a roll call, please?
Peggy Mueller Aragon.
Yes.
Danielle Gonzalez.
Yes.
Barbara Peterson.
Yes.
Josefina Dominguez.
Yes.
Courtney Jackson.
Yes.
Crystal Tapia Romero.
Yes, thank you. So our next item for discussion will be an update on the district's investment program for the second quarter of FY.
Sure.
Did I, oh, 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 you got it, you got it, you got it. Got carried away here. So if I could get a motion to approve our agenda items A through T excluding Q and A.
I move for approval.
Because I was confused.
We already voted on that, though.
Are you gonna do it?
I move for, I move for approval of consent with the exclusion of Q and A.
Second. Thank you. Ms. King, now may I have a roll call, please?
Peggy Mueller Aragon.
Yes.
Danielle Gonzalez.
Yes.
Barbara Peterson.
Yes.
Josefina Dominguez.
Yes.
Courtney Jackson.
Yes.
Crystal Tapia Romero.
Thank you. If it's not on here, I get all distracted. Here we go. Okay, so now our next item for discussion is an update on the district's investment program for the second quarter of FY two thousand and twenty-three. This is a discussion item. And I will turn it over to Mr. Turnbull from Accounting, and you have the floor, sir.
Thank you. Madam Chair, members of the board, Superintendent Elder, this is a quarterly investment report for the period of October first, two thousand and twenty-two through December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two. As you page through the report, you will know market commentary and information on market rates continue to trend up in response to interest rate hikes by the Federal Reserve. The summary overview provides a breakdown of asset class. We have forty-two percent on deposit at the bank, thirty-five percent in Treasury, and twenty-three percent in local, in the local investment pool. The strategy overview shows the current par total for the quarter at four-hundred-and-ninety-three million, compared to five-hundred-and-six million in the previous quarter. Current money market funds are at two-hundred-and-two million, compared to one-hundred-and-ninety-nine million last quarter. Funds held with the local New Mexico government investment pool held steady at one-hundred-and-eleven million. Current treasury investments are one-hundred-and-seventy-five million this quarter as compared to one-hundred-and-ninety million last quarter. But reinvestments of fifteen million was, were done at the beginning of January twenty-twenty-three, so brought it back up to one-hundred-and-ninety million par value. Interest earnings this quarter were at approximately two-point-three million as compared to one-point-one million last quarter. The rest of the report covers the compliance information and specific details on holdings. I now stand for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Turnbull. I will go ahead and open it up to the board for any questions or discussion on this particular item. Okay, if we have no further discussion, thank you. There you go. Quick and straight to the point. Awesome. So our next item for discussion will be item B, which is update on the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three budget, pre-planning for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four, and ESER Fund update. Woo-hoo! This is a discussion item, and we have Ms. Rosalinda Montoya, our Executive Director of Budget and Strategic Planning. You have the floor.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Superintendent Elder. I am here to present an update to our FY twenty-four budget planning process as well as the ESER, ESER update in this presentation. I'm like, I'm not sure if it's running or not.
We have a copy at our.
Okay. Okay, so in this presentation, I'm gonna go over the year-round process and where we are in that process. The FY twenty-four budget planning timeline, some fund types, and then the ESER update. Next. Next. So here is our annual process. It's year-round. On our year-round calendar, in an even year, the thirty-day session would end now in February, and we would know a lot more about the bills that have passed in order to present on this presentation. But as you know, this year, we are in a sixty-day session, and that will not end until March eighteenth. Next. So as far as our budget planning process and timeline, we are right in the middle of it all, and but first, I wanted to let you guys know that I and three other individuals of my staff have completed the EdGenomics coursework to receive the certificate in education finance from Georgetown University McCourt School of Public Policy. So we A to that. And then looking into an implementation partner, we have had a couple of meetings with ERS and are hopeful that they will be a good partner for us to transition to student-based budgeting. And as far as the budget stuff, we have been preparing our FY twenty-four school budget call templates, which will be sent out to principals this Friday. And we will have our budget call workshop for principals next week, as well as office hours, where any questions they have may be asked. And the things that we have incorporated into this budget call template, of course, are just a few things that we know, and they are salary-related. So we have made those changes in that template so that it will show the proper adjustments. And then, of course, as anything from the legislative session that comes, that may also need additional adjustments, we will do that as needed. And one of the things that I did want to let you know is that we will be reminding principals of the goals that you have set forth, and will communicate that to the principals to be mindful of those goals when reviewing their budget. We continue in our preparation of our department budget call templates. And those will be sent out to departments on March thirteenth. And we also attended the New Mexico ASWIL conference. And we're all districts in New Mexico participate, and this is a great place for us to network and discuss the legislative items that we believe have great momentum to pass and what issues may, they may cause, et cetera. So it's a good networking event. Next. I just wanted to put this slide in here just to, as a reminder of the different fund types that we have here at APS. And usually, when I give my budget presentation update, it is in reference to the operational funds. And today, I will be giving an update on our largest grant fund currently, which is ESER. And next. We have had three different ESER funds awarded to APS to date, and I will give a brief overview of each of those. So in ES, for the ESER one update, that was what we know as CARES, the Coronavirus Aid, Relief and Economic Security Act. And the scope of this was primarily safe and secure continuation of virtual education services and continuity of education for all students and staff in a safe environment. And the focus of that spending was PPE, masks, sanitation, HVAC, technology support, and laptops. In this first award, APS was awarded twenty-five million, nine-hundred-and-eighty-one thousand, nine-hundred-and-ninety-one dollars. And that was in FY twenty. And those funds expired in nine-thirty, two thousand and twenty-two. So those are already spent. We spent twenty-five million, eight-seventy-seven, four forty-eight and forty-two cents of that allocation. Then we moved on to ESER two, and known as CERSA, or the Corona Virus Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriations Act. And the scope for this was the plan of safe return to in-person education to pre-pandemic educational processes. And the focus for this was preparing schools for reopening, upgrading air quality in school buildings, preparations taken for reopening, PPE, and of course, testing for COVID-nineteen. And APS was awarded this in FY twenty-one. And that amount was one-hundred-and-ten million, two-hundred-and-seventy-eight, eight-hundred-and-seventeen dollars, which was four times of the first issue. And we are still in the process of closing out this one, as the funds are due to expire nine-thirty, twenty-three. So we're still spending out a lot of these funds concurrently with the newest and biggest funds that were given to us, which were ESER three, the ARPA funds, the American Rescue Plan Act, Elementary and Secondary Schools Emergency Relief Fund. And for this, the scope was addressing educational recovery and pandemic long-term negative effects. And for this, the scope was addressing educational recovery and pandemic long-term negative effects. The focus was learning to address learning loss, social, emotional and mental health services, technology related to pandemic facility projects due to pandemic and safe operations of schools. And APS for this third award was awarded, it was awarded in FY twenty-two. And it was for two hundred and thirty million, three hundred and twenty-six thousand, seventy-eight dollars. And these funds are due to expire nine thirty, twenty-four. So one thing that I wanted to address is that each level of these funding of the funding has been more stringent than the prior one, which has required us to really be cautious that all requirements are met before moving forward. In order to achieve this, we tried to get pre-approval from PED. And we want to make sure that down the road, when we bill for these purchases that we've made, sure that they will be approved as we cannot afford to pay for any disallowed purchases through operational. We also have had time, a time of regrouping with becoming fully aware of all the items in this application as we have had heavy turnover of staff. About seventy-five percent of the staff that initially started this implementation are no longer here. So we have made it a priority to become knowledgeable of everything that was in that application to keep everything moving and on track. And one of the other stumbling blocks is that we've had had to navigate is one that districts are dealing with nationwide and that's supply chain issues, labor issues, et cetera. All districts are following similar requirements on their funding. And this has been guiding us to use our funds similarly, and so we are all vying for similar services. And so this became very apparent to us in our training from Edgenomics when we were able to see firsthand all the issues arising for all districts. They further warned us to be careful when moving forth on our spending to avoid spending on recurring costs with these non-recurring funds. So we have been very mindful of this, of the Esser cliff that is going to be affecting us when building our FY twenty-five budget. Next. And then the numbers. So we have, I have laid out kind of the way we are tracking it. We have a dashboard internally that we track each of these areas. And the buckets are in that first column. It's, we have called them unfinished learning, social, emotional and mental health, technology initiatives, facility projects, safe operations of schools and other allocations. And at the very top of the second column, you'll see that two hundred and thirty million dollar amount that I had mentioned and then each amount that is dedicated to each of the following buckets. In that third column where it says expenses, those are actually your to-date expenses that has already hit. And that's how much we have spent. The fourth column is the encumbered column. That is items that have already have a purchase requisition in place and are ready to be spent upon. So that leaves us with our remaining budget in the green column. And so that's what we have remaining to spend before they expire in nine thirty of twenty-four. And then the first percentage column is kind of for each little bucket, what percentage has been spent to date? And then the second one is the percentage of spent plus encumbered to date. And so some of these are moving along nicely and a lot of them, even though they may look a little bit like they, they aren't moving quite as quickly as we would like. Some of these, like the technology initiatives, some of the items have come before you today to spend out their prior the CERSA funds. So then they'll get ramped up and moving on their ARPA funds. But I think with that.
Madam Chair, if I could just add one more detail, some of these items are actually going through the procurement process. And as you know, that could take some additional time. So you will be seeing some of the additional items because they are large and they have to go through the procurement. You will be seeing them come to the board for approval.
Thank you.
Can I just ask a clarifying question on that? So when you say they're going, some of them are going through procurement, do you know which categories we'll expect to see those?
The one that I, it comes to mind is safe operation of schools and we are looking at purchasing a device that Dr. Blakey has been really involved in and helping with safety at the schools.
At the button?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. So I know we're going to have lots of questions on this one. So what I'm going to do, I'm just going to go down and we'll go one by one and ask our questions and open it up for discussion for each item because I know I have several questions myself. So are you good? Board Member Gonzalez, if I start with you, we'll knock you out because I know you can have the fun ones.
Knock me out. No, I'm not good with that. Yes. So when you presented last year, you shared a bit about the progress monitoring committee that had been established to track the progress of the spending and a couple of the takeaways from that progress monitoring committee were that the proposed plans seemed disconnected from cabinet-level leadership positions and more aligned to passion projects, not strategy. So I'm curious if you could share an update on the progress monitoring committee and whether there have been any changes to the budgeted items based on that initial feedback from the committee.
Okay. Board Member Gonzalez, you are correct. There was a progress monitoring committee. We did re-establish a committee which does include Dr. Seguda, Miss Scormly, Jennifer Lucera Montoya, Rosalinda, myself, and we are actually going to ensure that Dr. Blakey and Dr. Bowman are part of it. And we have been going through the list of projects to make sure that they do align with the funds. As Rosalinda stated, the funds are more stringent than the prior. The prior had more flexibility and these are more stringent because of the requirements related to the pandemic. So we are having to go back with some of these projects to PED to get their review and their recommendations. So that has taken a little bit more time and we are working on modifications that might not have fit that model and also modifications for any expenditures that have their reoccurring that could hit the Esser Cliff. So that is where we are in the monitoring committee.
And so just to clarify, this monitoring committee that you described that where you're adding members of the cabinet, is this now a different committee or an additional committee or a repurposed committee? And is there still the committee of external folks to provide sort of that external lens on monitoring and some accountability?
Yeah, this is, the committee she mentioned is kind of a repurposed committee. As I mentioned, that seventy-five percent of the staff had, is no longer with us. Most of that was part of that monitoring committee. There was probably five of those individuals that were leading that are not there. Now, we have put this new committee in place while the legislative session is moving forward because Joseph Iscabeto is going to be who kind of re gets that.
Restarts.
Yeah, restarts that original monitoring committee, but he's so busy right now, right with the legislative session that he hasn't been able to take over that. But we still need to keep on moving forward. So that's where this other committee that Renet has mentioned is, has taken control of it for the moment.
Okay. And then, so just one other related follow-up then, given that the about one year ago takeaway was what I said, that things seem disconnected from strategy and more about passion projects, what's your sense of the shift that we should expect from passion projects towards strategically aligned and, and sort of a range of money or a percent of the original budget or whatever is easiest for you to sort of project?
Board Member Gonzalez, I would say due to all the work the board has been doing and, and the goals and, and the strategic plan, I, I believe that this definitely gives us more of a of a goal to work with all of these. So if anything was like a passion project, we definitely want to make sure it's linked to student outcomes and to the goals that the board has at the same time aligning it to the grant to ensure that we do get reimbursed for the funds. So there's a lot of moving parts, but I think the overall is that it is related to student outcomes and ensuring that we are supporting them.
Great, thank you. I may have more follow-ups, but I'll cede to the next board member for now.
Board Member Peterson.
So I would like my memory refreshed on what what a passion project with these funds are and how it would be misaligned with our strategic goals.
Well, Board Member Peterson, I, I think that what the committee member that made that comment last year was, was saying was that she wanted to see more cohesion amongst the plans and that things were sort of pulling together. And that some of the projects really served maybe perhaps a purpose in terms of one department or one area, but perhaps did not align with other projects. It was a, I don't remember the word passion project being used, but it's
As passion ideas.
But it's appropriate. I'm not disagreeing with.
Also, it just says ideas that are either optional or not intentionally targeted to those students or schools that most need resources and services following the pandemic was the other follow-up sentence there.
Yeah, and I I knew you were going to ask that question. It's been, it's been a year and I'd have to go back and and look, I do know that we put a hold on some projects because of that concern. And it may have been at specific, I'm really trying to think of some specific projects and I don't have one that's going to come to mind because I need one. But I'll continue to think about it.
Okay, I appreciate that. Going back to the idea of student-based budgeting, I'm just curious about and, and maybe this is for another discussion in the future, just really and truly what that looks like. And one of the things that crosses my mind is that with Title One funding, for instance, there's always a lot of discussion about, do we want those funds to be, do we want portability in that or do we really want to be able to target high needs, higher need schools versus letting small amounts of money follow individual students to schools where they may not make such an impact. And, and so when I think about school-based budgeting, is there any correlation with that? And what does that look like in terms of how we make decisions about allocations going to particular schools?
Board Member Peterson, that is a great, great question. It's definitely something that we have thought about also in the budget office. And speaking to ERS, they, I'm just going to read a couple of, of their experience. They have been doing this since two thousand and four and they've worked with over a hundred school systems. They have been involved with student-based or weighted-based budgeting for over fifteen years. And they have worked with most of the urban school districts nationally, such as Boston, Cleveland, Newark, Nashville, Indianapolis, Baltimore, Atlanta. So I, I firmly believe that they have tackled this question. And unfortunately, we're not to that point yet, but I think that that question is definitely on your mind and on our mind. And I am very excited to find out how that is tackled in some of these huge urban districts because I bet it's come up before. So very good question. Thank you.
Well, I really appreciate the work. I mean, I think it is a good way of approaching the budget. So it seems like we're learning as we go along and I do appreciate that.
Board Member Peterson, my memory's been jogged. There was a, an example, there was a summer curriculum for fourth and fifth graders. And it was a space-based curriculum, probably really awesome, probably really neat. But it was very expensive. It was something we'd never be able to replicate. It would have been a one-time, maybe two-time shot and then it would have gone away. And so that was a program we pulled back on because it, it's, we're trying to put programs into place that hopefully we can continue and replicate after Esser goes away. That's why we buy a lot of stuff and we don't buy a lot of people. We do have a situation, we do have people on the Esser payroll paying for a lot of our pilot projects with the eight-hour pilot out of Esser. When Esser goes away, the pilot project will go away and we'll have to see what happens with the state and the eleven forty and how they're going to fund that. That's another discussion. But we are collecting a lot of data at this time. So that's an example of something we felt we could fund in terms of paying people. We know it'll end, we know when it'll sunset and the ideas will have the data. So these people showed these demonstrable gains doing this work. Or it didn't work and therefore we're not going to support that anymore. And, and that's what we will move forward on. But like, so we had a curriculum, didn't do the curriculum, tried to invest in stuff. So we H, I mean, how much HVAC did we buy? I mean, you guys were arguing about sixteen million, thirty-two million. You know, now, and now, of course, you can't buy the parts, right? So now all of a sudden, there's been a big focus on school safety. There's going to be some purchases around that that we're going to be able to do and those will last. That'll continue. So that's the difference, I think, between the passion idea and the projects we're trying to invest in.
Thank you for that. I do appreciate it. One last quick question. Hearing that seventy-five percent of the human beings that were involved initially are gone is, do you have any analysis of, and it may not be appropriate to share, I'm just kind of curious when, when there's such a large loss of personnel.
So Board Member Peterson, I can, I think I've been talking about this for a year now. I continue to remind you that many of our staff members are leaving. Some was retirement, some was they could go someplace and make more money. And that was pretty much, honest, I was, I'm thinking about it. That's mostly it. They either retired or they went somewhere else. I guess I know what else they would have done. But, but I, most of them left on good terms. It's just they were tired. Or they got more money and they think, if I'm work this hard, I'll go work that hard for more money.
Something first to think about with human beings. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Milatagon. So just to go to the recurring cost, so what percentage do you think have, are we spending right now on what could end up becoming a recurring cost?
Yeah, we have been evaluating, oh, board member. We have been evaluating that. We do have plans for the ones that are on there. A lot of it is, I don't know exactly like the percentage. It would sound like a small percentage, but it still is significant when we think of bringing it back to operational. I believe at last count, we had like eighty or ninety FTE that will definitely be moving back over to operational funds.
And why that concerns me because you said that would be difficult to do once this money's gone to get that out of operational. So if you're talking about eighty to ninety FTE, that, that is considerable. So.
It is significant, but we have planned for this. We had a plan where it was like fully, the first year it was like we're, we're kind of weaning ourselves off of it. And actually this year I believe we'll, we'll be able to have already taken them into operational funds.
Okay.
And again, some of those are FTE, they're going to go away just by dint of the money going away and by dint of continuing to move out of the pandemic. So we're hopeful maintain, you know, any sort of social services, any counseling services, those are things we'd like to maintain as much as possible, but there's some, some other positions that just, and it's not necessarily a position, it might be people who are being paid extra for their time. And that will have to stop.
So that's still affects, it's still going to affect people that like Member Peterson alluded to is that it will affect people's ability it will affect people's ability to have a job, right? Or get paid less because the money's gone. So it's something you think about, could have, because it does affect somebody's, it affects somebody's life and we have to kind of always keep that in our mind.
Yes, I appreciate that comment, because we in the Budget Office are always thinking about this with any grant, however small or large, because whenever it's not able to be paid through a grant, it comes to operational. And so that's the other reason why we're really being mindful of even if it's a good way to spend money, that we make sure that it's gonna be approved because that's the other end of it, right? We go to get reimbursed for it and then they say, no, this is disallowed and we still have to cover it. So we are always mindful of that. So thank you for that.
I mean, running, just using grants, it's like that's always what could end up happening at the end of a grant is somebody doesn't have a job anymore. So that's why using grants, they're wonderful and they let us do things, you know, like this pilot, but they end. So it's just something to think about. So when it came to the the Esser one that expired on nine thirty twenty two, so there was like ninety, over ninety four thousand dollars, did that have to just get returned then?
Yes.
Okay, okay. And then now on the Esser three. Oh, no, the Esser two, we have a hundred and ten million, two hundred and seventy eight thousand. So how much, I might have missed it, how much do we have left to spend? Because that has to be done by this coming September.
Yes, all of those funds have been earmarked.
So they're already gonna be.
Yeah.
Okay.
So they're already, unless something unusual occurs that they can't get an item or something, that that will be fully expended by the time that it expires.
So I know that you said there are much more stringent requirements, which I understand. So are you concerned at all that we could lose some of this money on the Esser three just because they're so stringent?
Yes, that is one of our concerns. And you know, because of course with this many funds, it has really increased the workload of all departments in finance, right? Because there's more purchase requisitions going through for procurement, there's more transactions happening in the grants office. And and we've been doing it with the same amount of FTE. So it has been, it it is difficult and we're gonna do our very best to make best use of these funds. But we also don't want to just, you know, spend it because we have it. We want to make sure that it's intentional and very targeted and is doing what was required of us from this allocation.
I mean, I've never been, I just remember when I was teaching and I had been teaching for decades and we would get money and they would be like, have to spend it by this. Well, I don't need anything of a classroom filled with, you know, I've been doing this for twenty five years or, and so it was like, but we'll lose it. But you want to spend something just to spend it. You want to spend it because it's gonna affect our children and improve things for them. So don't spend just to spend. So then kind of my last question, maybe I'll kind of wrap it all up. When it comes to, do you have like a department like spreadsheet that says this department got this mu, you know, this much money, this is how much they've spent, they haven't spent. I know you have, you know, this here just about where the money's gone. But do you have something like that for departments and are there, I, well, you should probably answer that before I go on, because I could just not have to go on.
Yes, we do. This this little spreadsheet that I have here is the absolute roll up of everything that we have. We have multiple sheets that feed into this data. And so each one of those sheets has a list of each item and how much is designated to each one as the grant management team has to set up all those approval processes for each department that spends it, because each department, you know, has different approvals. So in that process of of setting up each of these, we we have a list of all those.
Okay. Now, do you think, just because I've just been told this, that there are some departments that are gonna maybe have a really hard time spending part of it because of the requirements? But there are other departments who could spend it that are you hoping to give some of that money from one department to another that can really spend it? And then are you thinking it may be a department that needs to know that they're gonna get that money because it's gonna take a while to get whatever resources they need, get the personnel to do whatever they need to get done? So is that?
Yes, we are doing this on a weekly basis. We are contacting departments and making sure that especially when we see that the spending hasn't come, you know, started or something, we're we're in communication with them and asking those exact questions. You know, you you said you could use this money, but maybe now something's changed. Are you able to give it back? And we have had some departments have told us, you know, I can't, I thought I could use two million, I can only use one, and we've brought it back in and and then seen how we could reallocate it without. First of all, we try to reallocate it to the same areas that we already had focused, so we don't have to change the application, but we're open to that too. But yes, we are doing that on a weekly basis.
Important Member Adagón, I think one of the big challenges is the supply chain. You know, as Rosalinda had mentioned, you know, there's districts all through the nation kind of vying for the same goods and services. So if there is a a big problem and not getting something, I foresee that it's going to be related to the supply chain challenges.
Yeah, and I've been told that too. It's like, we need to do something now because of exactly that, exactly that reason. So you need to make sure that we are doing that so that we don't face those supply chain issues. I think that's really important for us to do and that we are meeting needs, because now we're seeing safety as we see like what's happening, not just at West Mesa, but other schools, that that is is just a really big need. It it just is now, and that might have switched some in the last couple of years. And so I think that that's an, that's an easy one, I think, anyway, maybe not so easy for you guys, but and I I just want to make sure is that whatever we're doing is just really in alignment with, you know, meeting our kids' needs and really thinking about student outcomes, keeping our kids, you know, safe, just doing, always doing what's right by by our children and making sure it really is aligned with, you know, with our with our goals. Because that's what, you know, we're here for for the kids. So I'm I'm sure that that's what you all are doing. And thank you. I'm sorry that you don't have enough people helping you. Thank you.
Thank you. Board Member Jackson.
Yes, I I will reiterate that sentiment. You guys are working so very hard and and I I actually did write down a question of, do you have enough staff? It's a, it's the answer.
Uh, Board Member Jackson, um, a lot of these purchases, like I said, are are big, so we do have to go through an RFP process primarily, but we also have other avenues through the procurement that we can utilize state contracts or piggyback off of utilizing contracts or cooperatives. So those definitely have helped us because we've been able to find those contracts that have already gone through the procurement process and meet all of the requirements of the federal uniform guidance. And and that's like having another staff member without having another staff member. So that definitely has helped us.
But you didn't answer the question.
We can never have. We, we have very hardworking staff in all the departments.
Yeah. How many openings are in your department?
In mine, I have three. Yeah, in procurement, I think they have two.
So looking. Well, and so I think the first thing that I just wanted to do was to congratulate you and all of everybody who participated in the Edonomics certificate. I'd love to be able to hang on my wall that I went to Georgetown. I mean, that's or I got a certificate from Georgetown. That's fantastic. Who who here? Sorry to interrupt, but who here participated? Like, can, raise your hand.
So Mahela and Julianne, myself, and then Jennifer Lucero, who is our compliance for Esser.
Okay.
I start tomorrow.
And well, you'll get a certificate. That's great. Well, yeah, congratulations. Like, we, I I I just, I want to to highlight that because what I, not only was it a lot of work for you to have to go through, you did it because you're aligned with what we're trying to do. And I want you to rec, I want you to know that we appreciate that and we recognize that because it shows that you're you're we're working as a as a partnership. And so thank you for, thank you for doing that and for going through through that process. So that was the first thing. The second thing, and this is actually to Board Member Peterson, th- this isn't a specific list, but it's, it doesn't get specific like Superintendent Elder did, but there there is some examples of the quote unquote passion projects that I can read right now if you want to just hear. It's on the, well, it's not in this document. It's in the the document from last year.
If it'll take thirty seconds or less.
It will. Okay, so it says, this is true with funding directed at tier four support, tier three support, Math Discovery Academy, Summer Learning, Tutoring, Foundations, Computer Science/STEM, Professional Development for New and Novice Teachers, Summer Vibrant School Conference, uh, eight hour workday pilot and teacher loan repayment. So that was just kind of the sentence that came after the the passion that they are not intentionally targeted to those students or schools that most need the resources and services. So
Or they may be, but there needs to be justification for how they are.
Right, right. So I just wanted to kind of follow up on that with with the question. And then back to you guys. So I noticed, I did a quick calculation of the percentage of the ARPA spending. And I got forty percent unfinished learning, three percent for social, emotional, mental health, nine percent for technology, twelve percent for facility, twenty two percent for safe operations, and fourteen percent for other allocations. And so my first question is, how did we arrive at that breakdown of allocations? Look, more targeted, why only forty piece, forty percent for unfinished learning? Why not more?
Board Member Jackson, initially, there was a requirement to spend a certain percentage on it, and it was, I believe, twenty percent. So we aim to get over thirty. So the fact that we're at forty is is pretty good. The reality is, a lot of the program that we had, when we walked into this, we got really excited because we had visions of really pumping up our counseling services, being able to bring in lots of tutors, partnering with with corporations. It turned out that, first off, New Mexico doesn't have the infrastructure for a lot of that. We pretty much hired everybody we could hire and that's it. You know, and we were done. So now we're looking at, you know, like paper, for example, trying to bring in a national offering provider that teachers can use as a tool. But we're still over the percentage that we were required to spend. I think what you're gonna see when they, you asked the question earlier, you know, what would be shifting funds? The air, I think, technology, you're gonna see their spend go up. Right now, they're trying to finish their Esser two funds before they dip into their plans for Esser three. So when you looked at Esser three there, you see it's a zero, but it's just because they're not, we're saying finish Esser two and then we'll give you what you've got lined up for you in Esser three. So that number's gonna change. I think you'll see numbers change in facilities, specifically around the concept of student safety, and oper, safe operations of schools, because we've been pushed in that direction. And so like I said, the only number that was defined was that initial need to put a certain percentage into student learning, which we've exceeded. And we'll try to continue to exceed because that's obviously the most important area.
Okay, so so what you're saying is the these percentages are not static, they could change.
They're not static.
They're not static. Okay.
Not static, they will change.
They will change. Okay. So so the budgeted amount could change because of, like, to to Board Member Miller Aragon's point, you're, you might be reallocating based on funds. Okay. All right, um. Do you? This would be a philosophical question for you, but in that document from last year, there was a recommendation that the fund be redesigned as a comprehensive plan aligned to priorities and goals. Do you think that a year later you guys have done that and or are on track to realign this funding so that it directly affects student outcomes and our goals? And the, you know, the learning loss, the 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 grant requirements.
Board Member Jackson, I would have to say that that's our goal for all our funding. You know, as we're looking at the budget going forward, that's our goal to align it to the goals and the guardrails and student outcomes. So I would say all of our funding should have that goal in mind. Unfortunately, some of this was done, you know, prior to to us being in this role. Dr. Seguta is very involved in in this reallocation reset. And she definitely has that in mind. So I would say that it doesn't matter what funding it is, we should always have that in mind.
On to that end, Ms. Abadaka, thank you. I think that's a great answer. Remember, the goals weren't set until December. And we've been spending the money for a while now. So moving forward, yes, I think we'll we'll try. But like I said, some of the limitations specific around literacy and math and student engagement, a lot of that's gonna involve programming, professional development, or people. I think PD is something we should be investing in. I have no issue investing in in support for our our staff and again, including our principals and our our teachers. And I'd love to do more with city center staff, quite frankly, around this ability to build a plan and to talk across departmentals, departments and this concept of interoperability, where we sort of work together. And it's it's more seamless. But again, just a reminder, some of this money, quite a bit of this money was spent prior to the goals.
Thank you. And my last question, it's it's actually not a question, it's probably more of a suggestion. So last year, again, there was a progress monitoring committee that involved community members. And I would suggest strongly that community members be involved again in the progress monitoring committee that you guys have repurposed. I just, it it helps with transparency, it helps with accountability, and you know, we we want to make sure that our community knows how we're spending this obscene amount of money. And so I think if we can have more community involvement whenever possible, I would just have that suggestion to kind of bring some members on to that committee for you.
Thank you. Board Member Dominguez.
So lots of good questions tonight, and so I won't ask around repurposing committee people and where the seventy five percent went. But your point about community participation sparked an idea. Is there any chance that, I mean, we have a community pa, a parent, right, on the finance committee, or is it the audit? And so I mean, is that someone who we could tap because she's engaged in numbers already, right? Just an idea. I mean, it's because it's hard to find people from the community to to volunteer. Let me check here. So it it seems to me that the Esser cliff won't, I've heard that comment even, I mean, early on in in our in our term. And I believe it's been something that has been discussed from the onset, right? That that all of you were keenly aware that these funds are going to be they would, they would be finite and that you were meeting deadlines. So would you say has, have you all always been mindful about not relying on or creating positions that we would not recurring, recurring costs?
Board Member Dominguez, I would have to say yes, because like you said, from the beginning, we knew it was only a certain amount of period. And we have been discussing this in different, like, budget steering committee and cabinet. So it is definitely something that you can't wait to the future. You have So it is definitely something that you can't wait to the future. You have to start thinking about it like yesterday. So we have been mindful to it and um, trying to come up with a, you know, a, a strategy, a plan. So when we, we do get to the end of it, we don't hit that cliff as it could be. But being very mindful of it.
Okay, and that was my memory. Um, and, but it also struck me that this seems to be a, a culture in your area, in, in budgeting, uh, because you, you deal with grants, and those are also uh, they're not recurring. So there is, it strikes me that APS has had, uh, APS thought finance department has had that culture of thinking uh, already established. Uh, and it strikes me that finance people think that way. Uh, so I appreciate all that you do, all that you're doing. And uh, yes, congratulations on your edinomics uh, continuing ed. That's it.
Awesome, thank you. So, okay, my question is gonna be around the S R three funds, and I guess, specific around the safe operation of schools. I know we said that there's gonna be a percentage allocated for the pilot program. I think we're starting it at West Mesa for that button. But what are, do we have any idea of what the additional funds can be spent on? Because I know now it seems like the focus has been intensified for, you know, what's happening with gun violence district wide. So how, what is, what are our plans to address that sooner versus later?
Board Member Topper Mer, I'm a little hesitant to jump in because um, no, I, I think we talked about this. I, I, there's some things we're looking at that I don't wanna get, I don't wanna make any promises, because you know, we, we're not at RFP, we're not doing things, but I'll give you an example. Um, there is a technology around the concept of weapon detection that is an allowable expense based on the increase in violence across the nation. And um, so we're actually gonna have a demo here, I think in the next few weeks, um, that people can go and look and see what it looks like, but it's uh, you know, it's a technology that's being used at places like Disney World. And so, because we face real issues in terms of access and how many systems you can have at a particular school, because any detection system is only working if somebody's there to monitor it. Um, and of course, our schools have tons of entrances, and you just can't have them at every entrance, just can't. So um, that's an example of something we're looking at. Um, and moving on pretty quickly, we're probably also looking at, I, I know the technology department's got long-term plans as far as continuing this upgrade and, and update of all our systems, which is really very valuable. So those are some examples, I think, that are probably I can talk about, or I get any vendors excited.
When you say update of systems?
Well, like you talked about tonight, you know,
Okay.
Updating all your computers, your
Okay.
One of the big issues we have is all our screens are dying, you know, um, they're just old and the old, the old boards, they just fade over time. And so they're really, and I just don't get too excited, and I know we're not doing anything, but but that's an example of something that, that, that we, they're looking at.
Okay, and, and I think it goes without saying, but I would just hope that we would have a greater emphasis on that to give some type of response and support to our students based on the feedback that we've been receiving almost at every board meeting, email, phone calls that we, we are getting. You know, I never want us to be at the point where we just say thank you, and it, it just seems like for them, it falls on deaf ears, that they actually can see the changes that we're making, you know, and I'm happy to see that we, it looks like we have funds to support it. And um, so that doesn't seem to be an issue, but I just wanna, I don't wanna wait till twenty-four to spend those funds.
No, we're not waiting. Um, like I said, there's a demo coming up in the next couple of weeks. I actually had an opportunity to see the system in operation last week, and it helped, helped me to understand exactly what it looked like, because they kept describing it to me, and it was strange and foreign. But I, I understand it now, and it is kind of cool. Um, it won't solve all the problems, but it will help.
Yeah.
Will help. And um, uh, there is no silver bullet. There is no solution. And again, I remind everyone, this is not, what you're describing specifically is not a school problem. We're a component of the greater solution. There's a bigger solution to this issue, and it's a city-state national issue. Um, and we're more than willing to do our part, and we are.
Right, and I, I agree, it's a larger issue than outside of just our district. But I guess my concern is to make sure that our district is doing everything within our power to do our part.
I feel that we are.
Okay, I just want our teachers and our students to feel the same, because I feel like that's tends to be, there's a disconnect there between how, what we feel is appropriate and what, how it's getting passed on to in the classroom, and you know, directly in our school. So my, my hope is that we bridge that gap and that we help support them even greater than what they feel currently, right now. So my other question, uh, moving on from that, can you just give me an example of what other allocations, what categories would be under there?
Um, charter allocations are some of those, and then the indirect costs. There's some other, um, we have some other updates, but I'm trying to think. There's so many of them.
Yeah.
Can't remember what's exactly in that bucket, other than the charter allocations. That's most of it.
Okay. Okay, um, thank you. This was helpful. This helped, and I think, and I would ask that we probably make this something that we do talk about at least every other month. You know, so we make sure we have some current and consistent updates, so we're following through with it. Um, because it is a large amount, and we wanna just make sure that our community knows that we're spending it correctly. But hats off to you all. You guys know what I think of your team and Ms. Abadaka. You know what you're bringing to, to the table, and I have the utmost respect for what you guys are doing. So I wanna thank you personally. You guys have have seemed to, and I feel like I say it over again, like I'm a broken record, but you have made it easy for us to I guess, evolve with the new, you know, structure with student outcomes. And I, my opinion, I felt like you were one department that jumped on it first. You know, to make, to start making those changes. So I commend you and your team, you know, for doing that and keeping that at the forefront of every decision that you're making. And um, it's appreciated. So thank you. Do we have any other? Board Member Gonzalez?
I did have one follow-up, um, just going back to the budget cycle overall. Um, and you described some of the changes that you're making in terms of your, the call and the template and sharing the goals with principals, um, which I really appreciate. And so my question was, how might the budget documents, what we see, look different this year based on these changes? And sort of along with that, what can we do when to help make it easier for you? Um, because I know sort of, it was a little bit rocky last year.
Um, Board Member Gonzalez, we definitely are going to work on our communication to the board and be able to present the numbers in a way that supports the goals and also takes into account the guardrails. Um, so when we get our data and we're able to um, put our data together, we wanna be able to present it in a way um, to communicate to all of you in a way that you would like to see it, because um, you're correct, you know, we kind of followed the way we've always done it, maybe, and, and this is new. This is new, this is a new governance, this is a new way of presenting data. So we are definitely gonna work on when we get it to be able to um, massage it and put it in a way that is meaningful to the board.
Okay, great. And is, if there is anything else from us that would be helpful, it'd be great if you can share that through Ms. King or or Chair or however. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Moving on, oh, look at that, guys. So our next finance committee meeting will be held on Wednesday, March twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-three, at five PM in the John Milney Community Board Room of the Alice and Bruce King Educational Complex at sixty-four hundred Uptown Northeast, or virtually at www.aps.edu. So this meeting will be adjourned, and it will now be followed by a special Board of Education meeting. Is that you?
That's me.
Okay.
Yours.
So we're gonna need a transition period here. If you want, do we wanna take a break now, or?
Yeah.
Todd and his people need to come in and
Okay.
They all need to leave.
We'll take a minute break, yeah.
It was so cold out there, it was like fun, underneath a blanket with my little dog. One of those lazy days.
Board members, the room is life.
Okay, I would like to call this meeting to order. Welcome to the Board of Education Special Board Meeting. So I would like to have Ms. King do a roll call, please.
Yolanda Montoya Cordova, Danielle Gonzalez.
Here.
Barbara Peterson.
Here.
Crystal Tapia Romero.
Here.
Christina Dominguez.
Here.
Courtney Jackson.
Here.
Here. So our first item for consideration and action is adoption of the February twenty-second, twenty twenty-three Special Board of Education meeting.
I move to approve the February twenty-second, twenty twenty-three Special Board of Education meeting.
This is Crystal's second. Sorry.
Okay. May I have a roll call, Ms. King?
Danielle Gonzalez.
Yes.
Barbara Peterson.
Yes.
Crystal Tapia Romero.
Yes.
Christina Dominguez.
Yes.
Courtney Jackson.
Yes.
Peggy Miller Aragon.
Yes. Our next item for consideration and action is approval of the consent calendar items. If I could have a motion, please.
I move to approve the consent calendar items.
This is Crystal's second.
Okay, Ms. King, a roll call, please.
Danielle Gonzalez.
Yes.
Barbara Peterson.
Yes.
Crystal Tapia Romero.
Yes.
Christina Dominguez.
Yes.
Courtney Jackson.
Yes.
Peggy Miller Aragon.
Yes. And our next item for consideration and action is consideration for approval of the nomination for the New Mexico School Board Association's twenty twenty-three Excellence in Student Achievement Award. And Dr. Albright, you have the floor.
You, Vice President Mola Adogan, board members and Superintendent Elder. Each year, the New makes a chance to celebrate a person or a group that have played an important role in improving student achievement. This year, the board members were asked to send nominations to the Board Services Office and we received two. They were emailed to you on Friday and they're also in front of you on the dais. The nominations are also welcome from the floor. Tonight, I need you to decide who should receive this award. With that, I stand for questions.
Okay, are there any, any questions? So we have the no individuals and so we have the community school coordinators and the APS School Board and District. So does anybody have any input at all? Or if you could let me know what you, what you think, I think if we go down the line, that might just, that might help. Okay, member Dominguez, what do you think?
I'm torn because I think they are both worthy nomination. So let me, I'm going to listen to the rest.
Okay, remember Jackson?
I would go with community school coordinator simply because I just don't feel comfortable nominating myself.
Okay, remember Tapia Romero?
Well, that was my same thing. I'm like, I feel awkward saying the school board, but I know we are kicking butt at the same time. And really, you know, trying to lead the ship in a new direction, but I feel like I need, but community school coordinators are fabulous in what they do and their dedication, you know, to the schools and actually seeing the outcomes that they're providing. So I believe I would go with community school coordinators.
Okay, member Peterson.
Absolutely, community school coordinators. I think there are other more appropriate formats for recognizing the board. This is the School Board Association nominations and we, they do recognize school board in particular for particular achievements, but I, I think it is much more appropriate for us as a body to recognize other, other folks who are out there in the, in the community and in their schools, working for students.
Okay, and member Gonzalez. So I agree with community school coordinators. I think that would be great and I would support that. I was going to recommend that we did the selfless senior again and just pick randomly, but I didn't submit that because I assumed somebody else would. So I just put that on the table as another option, but I do like the idea of community school coordinators.
Yes.
The selfless seniors are coming. That's a different New Mexico School Boards Association Award. That's their scholarship award and that's coming in a few months.
Right. And I do believe that we had a recipient last year. So they do a delegation and they make you skip a year if, if you were awarded a scholarship the previous year. So I believe we are not eligible for, for a student scholarship this year. Which is
You're absolutely right. Sorry. Yes, you're absolutely right, Board Member Peterson.
Although they all do deserve it. Absolutely.
In addition, students are not eligible for this award. They're specifically, we are specifically asked not to nominate students for this award.
Okay. Member Dominguez, did you?
Didn't we nominate students last year?
No, not.
No, no. That's not, she was board member.
Peterson was clarifying that.
Yeah.
Why does it have that title of student achievement award?
Because it's about for student. For who is helping get the student achievement, who's helping get the students there.
With student achievement, not
Not, not the student who has achieved. Right, correct. You got it. Okay, so.
You know, I, I think everyone's comment about community school coordinators is absolutely correct. They are in the trenches.
I mean, that's where I, I mean, that's where I would be as well. So I mean, I just think they just such a great job. I mean, they're amazing, amazing, amazing. Okay, so then I just need a motion to, it seems like to accept the community school coordinators to nominate them.
Can I ask a quest, clarifying question real quick?
Yes.
So would we just be getting one award then for the community school coordinators and it can be in Brian Garcia's office who coordinates the coordinators?
Let me check. I believe what they do is N M S B A will provide one actual award that we can pay for additional ones. So that's something we can, we can decide whether, and I, I've lost track of how many coordinators and how much it would cost for each one. So
The awards are fifty dollars each additionally, fifty dollars. And I believe there are somewhere around fifty to sixty coordinators.
So perhaps one in Garcia's office.
That number just made our decision.
You said it and send it out to everyone.
I'm sure we can figure something out. Okay, all right. If somebody can just make a motion, I don't know if we have one yet.
I motion, we, go ahead, Barbara.
It is all yours.
I know you are on the, you and Peggy sit on the A B C. I'll give you the honor.
I move that we nominate the community school coordinators to receive the twenty twenty-three N M S B A Student Achievement Award.
I second.
Wonderful. So Ms. King can have a roll call, please.
Danielle Gonzalez.
Yes.
Barbara Peterson.
Yes.
Crystal Tapia Romero.
Yes.
Christina Dominguez.
Yes.
Courtney Jackson.
Yes.
Peggy Miller Aragon.
Yes. Yay.
Thank you.
Coordinators, thank you for all you do. Okay, so we're on to our next agenda item. So our next agenda item is consideration for approval to convene an executive session pursuant to N M S A nineteen seventy-eight, ten dash fifteen dash one H five for the purpose of discussing bargaining strategy to collective bargaining negotiations between A P S and bargaining units representing A P S employees. If I could have a motion for that.
So moved this Danielle. Do we have to read the?
Yeah.
I move that we approve the consideration for approval to convene an executive session pursuant to N M S A nineteen seventy-eight, ten dash fifteen, one H five for the purpose of discussing bargaining strategy to collective bargaining negotiations between A P S and bargaining units representing A P S employees.
I second.
Okay, Ms. King, I have a roll call vote, please.
Danielle Gonzalez.
Yes.
Barbara Peterson.
Yes.
Crystal Tapia Romero.
Yes.
Christina Dominguez.
Yes.
Courtney Jackson.
Yes.
Peggy Miller Aragon.
Yes. Okay, so everybody that's